This is the Wapaka School District Board of Education meeting.
Okay, thank you everyone for making time for this evening's meeting. Being the 12th of the month of November, albeit belated, I'd like to thank all of those that have served, whether they're with our staff, on board, and in our community. So, thank you very much for your service. With that, we'll go to the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Stevens, you're in a good place.
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, I'll call the meeting's order. We'll call, let the record reflect that all members of the Board are present with the exception of Dale Felton and Pat Fair who are excused from this evening. With that, we'll move on to the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. With that, we'll move on to public comment. Does anyone wish to address the Board this evening voluntarily? Okay, that puts us slightly ahead of schedule. We'll go on to our minutes of prior meetings. We'll start with the October 2nd expulsion hearing. Is there a motion to approve? Copies are at your office here.
No vote.
Motion to approve or second?
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Second hearing on October 2nd? Is there a motion? Motion?
Second.
In a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? October 8th hearing?
So move.
Motion in second?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? The October 8th regular Board meeting?
So move.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in second? Is there any discussion or questions? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? And the October 30th budget hearing?
So move.
Motion? That was a second by Mr. Rehka. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? We'll move on to communications and start with the District Administrator's report.
Last month, I told you about an upcoming DOT Department of Transportation meeting that we had scheduled, so we had that meeting two weeks ago to discuss the traffic flow at both the high school and the middle school WLC campuses. We implemented some temporary changes that began on Monday, November 4th, that involved placing a roadblock on Park Street, so that vehicles that are exiting the middle school and taking a right onto Churchill are not allowed then to take immediate left onto Park. And it also means that they'd be forced to continue down Churchill Street. And doing that has reduced the level of congestion that existed. The next day, what we did was a little experiment, and we staked buses, about five at a time. So after the fifth bus turned onto Churchill, the next fleet of five buses would come through. If, in your report, what you received at that point, before I had the follow-up meeting yesterday, the feedback I was getting was positive, that it was having a positive effect, maybe not exactly the desired effect that we wanted, but what was shared with me is that it was still causing congestion on Highway 10 in that ramp where they turned to go onto 22. And part of the goal was to eliminate our resource officer from having to go in direct traffic at that time. So what they did yesterday is they took half of the bus fleet, about nine buses that are leaving the middle school campus area, and had them turn right on Churchill, and then, what is it, take a left on this, I forget, the old school, and then take another left. Eventually, it goes Lake Street to Maine, I believe. And when Chief Hosele called me last night, he said it went very well. There still was a little bit of congestion. It was a semi that was longer than typical, and there was a little bit of a holdup, but it wasn't anywhere near. So we're just gonna, I haven't heard back today how it went, but we're gonna continue to monitor that. I anticipate that the city is going to be eventually putting a permanent no-left turn on Churchill and Park.
Just during specific times?
I don't know exactly. We're gonna, this is gonna be months away. We'll continue to experiment and try to train the parents and the community members what we're, you know, how it's gonna be before it becomes final, but we'll continue to keep you informed on how that goes. Since our regular October Board meeting, we've had two, what we're calling Community-School Safety Committee meetings, one on the 15th and the 29th of October. The last session involved a group called Critical Response Group. It's an organization that creates maps, mapping grids of our schools to cut down on the emergency response time the first responders would have, getting every second count. So the more we can cut every second that the first responders get to the exact location of the emergency could save lives. Our next Community-School Safety Committee is scheduled for Tuesday, November 26th at 5:00 here in the community room. So that'll be on the agenda because, one of the posted meetings, because we've had several different Board members, at least four or five at different times attending also. Our last retreat took place on Wednesday of last week, as you're aware, and we covered Chapter 6 of our book study. I'm hoping that we can schedule our seventh and final chapter of this book. I forgot to do that before the last meeting. Nobody reminded me.
That's correct.
I sent an email.
So, you sent me an email? Today?
No, last week. I missed the retreat.
Oh, yeah, that's right. That's right. So what I'm asking, I'm gonna throw out a date, will Wednesday, December 4th work?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah?
What time?
What time do you want?
10:00.
Do you work?
Is that too early?
I don't think I can do it. I don't think I can do it till after 1:00.
That's fine.
Is that okay?
At what time?
I can do it after 1:00.
Okay. 1:00? Steve?
I don't know unless I call.
Okay.
But I think I'll be okay.
This is December 3rd?
December 4th. Wednesday, December 4th at 1:00 tentatively? Case in. Okay, after our October, and I talked a little bit about this last month, that I was going to go to Wapaka County Workforce Summit? We had that on October 16th. The next day, Aaron Jensen and I went to Stevens Point for another workforce, Community Growth Summit. As you know, the purpose is to grow jobs, improve our schools, and increase the level of housing that's available here. So, I guess part of my point is, I want you to know that we followed up after these meetings, and we've created what we're calling right now, Wapaka Growth Team. It's a committee that is composed of some of our staff, Carl and Steve and Julie Kasabaki, okay, and Aaron and some of his staff, and we've involved some of our business leaders from the Foundry, Gussman, Neville. And the person behind the scenes that's helping us brainstorm and move forward is Dave Thiel, the County Economic Development Corporation. So our purpose is to, when we met this past week, we decided that right now our purpose is to focus on housing. And so I'll keep you guys abreast of how we're progressing in that format.
Ron, did you get Dave's letter every month? Dave Thiel?
A letter every month?
Yeah.
No.
You requested from him, and it would be interesting for all the Board members. I know the city consult gets it in, and they're very interesting. He's talking just what you're talking.
Okay.
And he'll be glad to send it to you, I know of it.
I'll ask him. A big part of this is, I mean, it's multifaceted. It's not just on housing.
Oh, I know, it's.
It's gonna be on marketing. It's gonna be on talking about the quality of life that exists, living and raising a family, in our zip code here. The chamber's involved, I forgot to mention the chamber, county leadership, people were invited, so that's that. On Thursday of last week, I was able to have our first teacher cabinet meeting. I don't know if you remember, but I wanted to get the teacher cabinet going. What we were starting is the book study that we're doing, and that the admin team is doing. Last week, we went through Chapter 1, and I have 19 staff members that were interested in participating, so I was pretty excited about that. 10 people showed up for the first meeting, but there was a conflict. So we meet on the first Thursday of the month, from 3:30 to 4:30. Uh, let's see. Also, you know, this transition plan is starting to come to the later stages, as you guys are aware, these pre-planned activities that I had. So the five areas, which I want to give a report to you on, involve student achievement, the governance team, organizational capacity and alignment, organizational culture, and then finally, community and public relations. So there's still some things that I just haven't been able to get to that were in that plan, that I'll probably work in December and January, but in the meantime, I hope, my plan is hopefully next month, I want to give you a little summary report of what was learned, and then in there will be some recommendations on what we should do next. Okay? Today, the DPI publicly released the School District Report Cards. So I, you know, at some point in time down the road, we'll dig into that. Marco, Marco and I spoke. But right now, just so you guys are aware, we continue to grow and improve. The district exceeds, the middle school exceeds, WLC and the high school meet, and so we should be very proud of the progress that is being made by our staff. So that's good news. Lastly, deer season starts pretty soon, the holy season for a lot of people. And I will be leaving tomorrow afternoon, and I'll be in Michigan for the opening of rifle season, and then I'll be returning on the 20th, Wednesday, the 20th. I'll be back in the office on the 21st. So Mark is gonna be kind of in charge, and so I'll be communicating with Rightway if there's any weather things. Mark will be the guy that will contact. On Friday of this week, Mark will be out at a meeting, and Lori will be out at a meeting, so Carl will be in charge on Friday. So Lee, if there's anything going on, will be calling and working with Carl on Friday, otherwise he'll have Mark's number. So we're preparing case.
We've got Mark's number already. Wait a minute, what?
So, no snow, right, Lori, on?
Well, you know, in the UP, they do what's called the Hiki Lunta Dance. That's the Finlander Snow Dance.
Because you want snow for hunting.
We are not gonna request, at this time, a demonstration, so it's not on the agenda.
Yay! Definitely a dancing.
What's that?
I said yay, dancing.
Well, I'm not going to do that. I would give instructions for somebody else.
Oh, great.
Okay. Continue with communications.
Yeah, American Education Week is November 18th through the 22nd, so that's coming up.
Donations?
The following four donations are in your packet. All of them are gifts without restrictions, so what that means is they can be approved by administration, but at the same time, we wanted them to come to the Board for the Board's acknowledgement, just so that you guys are aware.
Are you looking for a motion now?
No, no, just make you aware, that's also you're aware of it. If you had quite, I don't think anybody has any questions, because they're pre-sent explanatory, Steve?
Well, when I looked over at the one that go to the chain elementary, the figures don't add up. My figures come to $161, back here it says $112.
How much does the check for? $112?
$112, what, no.
If I remember right, it is, but I. $161. And what was your total calculation, Mo, Steve?
Well, when you add 98 and 63, well, it does come up. Okay, on the next page, it says $112, and that's what I was trying to get it to come up to, and I couldn't get it to come up.
Oh, that's their projected revenue, Steve, that they plan to make off of that.
Oh, I see, so they're gonna get this plus $112?
They anticipate they're gonna get that revenue.
Okay, I didn't understand that. Thank you.
Well, and there also was another check from the same church for $112. I mean, there were two donations from this church.
Okay.
And we see a check for $112. This is the one to the WLC.
He gave two. Okay, thank you.
All right, our sincere thanks to Buena Vista United Methodist Church for their donations, and First Aid Bean for their donation.
Where is Buena Vista Methodist Church?
Ron, did you know where Buena Vista Methodist Church is?
I don't know, it's out by the town of Belt Lane, or, no, it would be like toward Almond.
Okay.
They have students that are in their congregation that are in those classes.
Oh, okay.
They'll be 15 people on that street.
Okay, again, our thanks to those entities for their generosity to the schools. That will move on to monitoring.
Yeah, we have Mr. John Erzbacher here to give our summer school report.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, John.
And we will hand you out something, we haven't done this before, but I thought it might be of interest to hand out the summer school course catalog, so you can kind of get an idea of what the school district puts on from three-year-old EC to the senior year for people, what they can take in school, and where the slides are gonna be coming from. Are you ready, Mr. Stevens? Get to go to the next one, please. So this is our annual report. Again, the purpose for summer school is, we do provide a lot of enrichment courses, especially at the elementary level. Remediation courses are at the middle school and dominantly at the high school right now. And I know there'll be a discussion between Ms. Holbert and myself about looking at remediation courses at the middle school as well as we move forward into next year. But these are just some examples of some of the classes that we do run, and the purpose of continuing our education journey with our students in the school district. So, community partnerships. And one of the things that we've tried to increase over the last few years are the community partnerships, working with the school district of Wapaka, and our summer school program. And on the screen, you'll see, these are just samples. The newest one that we're working with is Falk's Brothers. We had a couple of the elementary art classes with Mr. Lonzak, Paint the Front Plow, and I know there was some painting at some of the other levels with Falk's Brothers as well. But the rest of those, we've been partnering with for a number of years now, and continue to do so. So one of the classes that I wanted to highlight at the elementary school is Traveling Caravan Class. It's a class that Mrs. Cook puts on, and kids sign up, and what they do is they go around to community organizations to help out wherever they need help. And you'll see some of the examples, Humane Society, Tales and Trails Dog Park, and they go to these places, and they say, "What do you need from us? We're here to help you for the day." And they spend three to four hours volunteering at all of these places within the community, as well as volunteering to do things around this campus, the WLC and the middle school campus as well. So just something I thought was interesting, there's more to summer school than just purely academics, but getting out, making connections with our community, which is important. Mrs. Cook does a good job with the students. So I went back a couple of years, just to kind of give you an idea and compare from year to year. Here's some samples of the new courses that we added in 2017. They're still running in some different forms as well. 2018, last summer, we added quite a bit, the summer of 2018. A lot of the classes are renamed and just tweaked a little bit to keep kids' interest instead of the same class over and over and over, losing interest. So there are many, and that's why I wanted to share the course catalog, so you can actually see the class descriptions of all of these classes that are running. And this year, we added some new courses as well. So you'll see K-8, the high school, has added quite a few courses over the last few years in a different manner, actually just formalizing the summer school progress that kids can make. And this year, a Health 8 class was an online course, and it was a very successful course here at the high school. And it was an online course for students in middle school who needed to complete their health in order to get to the high school and be able to open up their schedules a little bit. And then the summer hockey camp was new this year. The football camp started last year, the volleyball camp, basketball camp, so hockey just started this year at the high school as well. And some additional new courses at the lower end of it, some new ones, SPATH, which is Sports Math, yarn weaving, yoga fundamental, coloring. These are just some really fun enrichment courses that our staff decide to put on. The teachers create their course, they put their description together, and they make it fun for kids, and these classes fill pretty well. So classroom expenses, I did the last three years. So these are what the teachers ask for, whether they put a PO in or a credit reimbursement. And you will see that from 2018 to 19, we had a decrease of $524. I do want to note that that decrease is probably because we missed a week due to the storm in July, where the WLC and middle school were completely shut down for the week, and the high school had, I think, three days of courses. So we missed seven total days, so I believe that's probably what's accounting for the decrease. Summer school transportation, there's a pretty large decrease. The reason for that is in 18, we tried having five bus routes, if you remember, throughout the school district, picking up kids and bringing them to school. So that didn't go over very well. I think we averaged somewhere between 12 and 17 kids a day being transported on five buses, so it didn't seem cost-effective. So this last year, we did not do that, and that's where you see the decrease of $5,379. The $1,742, that's the bus that goes from the WLC to the rec center every day to bring the kids down to the rec program. It's also for field trips that we might have in summer school, but you'll see, after not trying the busing and not trying the busing, you will see that we actually had an increase in kids, so the busing really wasn't a factor in our summer school program. So focused on high school. This was a big jump for Wapaka High School, and I credit Mr. Robalski for working on this. In 1853, high school students earned a total of 47.5 credits through the Continuous Progress courses. And this last year, there was a gain of 20 students, so 73 students actually earned 55 credits through those courses. Of the 66 that Rocker 40 courses ran, and 25 of them are the Continuous Progress courses. And so our bread and butter for summer school, that I hold my breath every summer when we gather these numbers, is the minutes, because that's what our FTEs are determined by. If you look at the enrollment, the number of students in that middle column, you'll see that in 18, we went from 1538, and we actually increased our student enrollment going into this school year. I truly believe that was the high school that increased, where you see that increase with the number of the different camps and courses that the high school had to offer, and more kids taking the Continuous Progress courses. So that's, I believe, where that jump came. The instructional minutes are what we look at when we look at our number of FTEs. It's like 49,800 minutes for one FTE. And you'll see that our minutes went down from 18 to 19, and again, we lost a week at the elementary, middle school, and two days at the high school. I believe that if we did not lose that week to the storms and the power being out, we probably would have surpassed that again. And if you look at the enrollment of the school district of Wapaka to have 1,500 kids going to summer school, that's a pretty good chunk of our kids, and I still think there's room to grow. And that asterisk by the 78 was, we expected to beat the 81 FTE that we had a year ago. That week off took away that, because we cannot count those minutes when the kids aren't in the seats. So, still a very successful summer school summer, but hopefully next year, we'll see another jump there. And I want to do summer school staffing. You'll see from 2018 to 2019, pretty similar. We actually had one less teacher this past year and three additional aides. It all depends on the courses and the kids that enroll. So we have a lot of kids with special needs that come in, that do need the one-on-one support, and we're able to provide that. And we do have people offering their assistance in the summer, so just a wonderful staff to work with, and they come in and they do help out the kids, so we're very, very pleased with that. Food service, last year, I didn't break out breakfast and lunch. We did that this year, but you'll see the total meals from one year to the next, and we would have surpassed that had we not missed that week. So some things we're looking to moving forward, continuing with no fees. We're running with just a few thousand, 1,500 kids in a three-week summer school with our fees, so it's a pretty cost-effective when it comes to materials and things like that. So I would suggest we continue with that. I would suggest we continue with the three sessions. That's a lot of meals being served. If anything, kids are being able to get two meals, breakfast and lunch, for six weeks of our summer if they choose to go to summer school. And even if they aren't enrolled in summer school, they can still come and have breakfast and lunch without even attending summer school. So we do see once in a while, some of the older kids bring their siblings in, and they say, "Well, we're here, we might as well have breakfast," and they will stay and have breakfast. Look into more online options. This last year was really our first look at an online course, in that Health course, and it was very successful. So something I think we can look at, maybe the middle school and high school especially, to add some more of the online options that kids really like to take. And the online kids, there were 26, 27 in that Health class, and all successful but one, I understand. So that's a, that's pretty good. And then continuing to utilize Infinite Campus. That's been a real big plus for the administrative side of things, the secretary's side of things. When we can put our information in Infinite Campus, it calculates that stuff for us. We don't have to do it by hand, especially the minutes. So the more courses we can get into our Infinite Campus programming, the better summer school will run, more efficient we'll all be able to work with it as well. And then the last slide I put on there, just some proposed dates for next summer. That's giving a little room in June for the end of the school year, in case we have some snow or cold weather or whatever. We padded it so we would be able to start even if there were days to be made up, so that shouldn't conflict with anything. And then again, we're done in July, and so there's still that month of August where families want to take vacation, they can still attend summer school, and August is wide open for the families if they choose to do so. Any questions?
I noticed on your recommendations for 2020, a bus is not included. Is that something that was very successful then?
It was not.
It was not?
The busing was not successful and not cost-effective. We actually, by not having the buses this year, we increased our student enrollment anyway. So busing isn't really a factor for summer school for the masses. I'm sure there are people out there who could use it, but it just wasn't something that we felt was needed at the time, Sandy. If we thought there was a larger population using it, we would have continued with it, but there just wasn't. To have five buses on the road to bring 17 total students.
But you did keep one bus?
We do, the one to the rec center, yep, and that's full.
And, okay.
Yeah, after summer school, 12:30 they eat, they jump on that bus, and then they go to the after-school rec program. Many kids do.
Got it.
There's 30, 40 kids on that bus every day then. Take a ride though.
That would continue?
Yes, that continues.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we'll move on to Board reports. We'll start with any meetings attended or school visits. Does anyone have anything to report?
I would like to report going to the chain school today, and I sat in on some Suzuki lessons, and it was great. I actually sat in twice, there was two kids having lessons, and I sat through that and then sat through the next two. And this gal who was doing it was just fantastic. She was so patient with them, holding their hands just right and just getting everything right. She wouldn't let them go until they did it right. It was just, it was very, very good. I'm impressed with the program.
Are they, are they using their instruments now, or?
Well, just enough to go beep, beep. It wasn't much, but it was, she made them do it until they did it right, and it was really very good.
Good. Thank you.
I also went to the CEC and tagged team, it was Steve, and went in and listened to some Suzuki lessons as well. And was, and I guess next week, there may be some actual, more actual playing. There is a little bit, as Steve said. I was just so impressed at the determination and perseverance of the kids who were taking it, because there were some rhythm exercises that they were doing, and they had to match. There are lessons posted on YouTube, on CEC YouTube, so that they can practice during the weeks. And so you do this rhythm that's somewhat irregular and repetitive, and if they got stuck or missing, they didn't give up. stuck or missing, they didn't give up. It was great. It was really nice to see. They, they kept at it, learned, they were holding their vital limbs, just with their jaw resting, and they had to have their hand up by their shoulder, and learning rep posture and to bow. They have a very nice greeting where the, the teacher starts by saying raps. And I left my notes, but it sort of, "Thank you for letting me teach," and the students respond with something similar, "But thank you for letting me learn," or "Helping me learn." And just very nice, some very nice ritual attached, a lot of respect, it's very respectful. It was, it was great.
Sure, mine was a little bit not so exciting, a little bit more Monday, and I went to the WLC today, and I actually saw something that was interesting to me anyway, because of my computer background. I saw the software and the process that they use to evaluate the teachers and keep track of their evaluations. And I can tell you, you know, the last, you know, five or six years of my career here, the methods to collect your artifacts and to create your student, student learning objectives was all over the place. One year, it was this process, the next year, it was this software, the next year, it was a hit and a miss, and, and nothing ever, you would do everything in one year, and the next year, everything had to change. So what I saw was the standard that the entire district is using, because before, every principal was using their own little process or their own little way that they're going to do this and collect the data. Now it's standard district-wide, and it's all in one place. And it's, and it's much more time-efficient for the staff and the evaluators to track what they're doing, when the certain tasks need to be done, because every year, everyone has to write their student learning objectives. Now, what's pretty cool about this software is that it integrates also with the test data that we ran the year before. So it can, it pulls that data in, and you can look at those data in different kind of charts or graphs, and then you can make your student learning objectives from the data. So it's integrating several pieces of software that they have into one area. And since it's all similar now, when somebody at the top, let's say, when, when Mark is evaluating either the administrators or the, or the teachers, everything's done the exact same way. And nothing is done like, oh, over here is one way, and over here is something different. I mean, I did it, literally, last six years, probably six different ways, and it drove me crazy, because it's like, now, just tell me what I need to do. Well, now everything's standardized all the way through, and it's all integrated. So it was really actually, and then, and then I saw the, the CISA software, the CISA six software, that kind of pulls it all together as well with the other pieces of software, and it makes a lot of sense. And I, I gotta commend the administration for implementing this program to do this, because it, it saves everybody a lot of time, and everything's in one place. It's, it's actually awesome. As boring as it sounds, I think it's very effective, so.
I have two other visits.
Nope.
I'll just be very brief. I went to the high school musical. It was wonderful, and our own Addie Perquette is, was the assistant director, and got a nice round of applause. I went to the final performance, and it was, it's always nice to see the thank yous at the end of everything, too. They're often, they're very heartfelt. It was a great deal of fun, and I could have sung along, but didn't. I also had the privilege of attending the dress rehearsal for the new actors and authors, their first performance, which I think is tonight, because I couldn't make any of the other performances. And it was really a fine performance. It was lovely, and they somewhat spontaneously invited me to comment and give them some feedback. But it was wonderful to see how many, I mean, that's what, forty-five students? They were pretty much all onstage, dancing, singing, speaking in unison, in, in sort of vocal choral, which is very difficult, and you could understand what they were saying anyhow. If you get a chance to go see an actual performance, I'd say, do it. It was, it was terrific. And also, then, heard Laura speak last night. It was very wonderful. So glad to go to that. So there, I'm done. Thank you.
I was on the docket to go to the high school, so I went to the high school today. And my nose led me down the hall in this direction to the home ec area, and they were making homemade marinara sauce. Oh, and having so much fun, made it from scratch. It was just so exciting to see them sauteing garlic and crushing tomatoes and whatever. So they were all excited, because they actually get to eat it on Thursday with some cheese bread, so. Anyway, that was interesting, and I was.
I knew we were planning to come back on Thursday.
Yes, I was, but I won't be here, but I sure wish I was, because that sauce smelled delicious. And so I had a chance to walk around and just talk to the students, and they loved the class, and they just commented on how much they're learning and different sauces and things, and they really have an excitement for cooking. And I, I just think that's such a wonderful skill for all of them to have. It's, that's certainly a lifelong skill. Then I went on into English class, Mark Reeves' class, was doing the Iliad and the Odyssey. And the students were not in the class, it was her prep time, so we sat down and had a nice chat about some of the classics that she's studying with her, her students, and I said that they're not reading the whole book, are they? And she said, no. She picks certain parts out, and they do dramatic readings of it, excuse me, and she explains it. So it, to me, it was a wonderful way to make some literature that may be difficult to plow through, interesting for the young people. Excuse me. And she talked about how she has a senior class that's a college class, and so they're all going to a play at UW Fox Valley this Friday night, and how excited they are. They're gonna take the school van and go out for dinner first and go to the play, and I thought, what a wonderful opportunity for young people, you know, to do something in the fine arts field as well, to tie it into the English class. Then I went down to the art class, and when we saw the board here about mural painting for summer school, the art room here, one of the art rooms, the entire wall is filled, and I had never seen this, filled with lockers, little lockers about this big, and there must have been sixty of them. And they're all one on top of the other, connected, where they, the people keep their, the students keep their art supplies. But it was all done as a mural, and it was all like rainbow-inspired, you know, red, orange, yellow, green, all the colors of the rainbow. And it was so unique. I commented on it and said, how was this done? She said, a summer school class did it. So, and she said it just brightens the whole room, so it was amazing to hear that tonight, then. But the young people, one of their assignments every week is a sketchbook. A sketchbook project that they have to do on their own, and there's a different theme each week. And this was, today it was, or this week, it was Celtic symbols. So they had to design a story around Celtic symbols and explain it to her, and what the colors meant and whatever. It was just fascinating to see how each one had interpreted that project so differently. And then I went into a Spanish class, and it was absolutely silent, and I thought, what's going on here? Although, today must have been a test day at the high school, because a lot of the classrooms that I went to, you could see all of them were diligently working on their pro books, and a lot of the teachers were like their testing. So I just said, adios, and hola. So I don't, I'll go. And so, said hello to the students. So it was a great visit, it was very versatile, I got to see a lot of the arts, so, thank you.
All right, moving on, upcoming meetings. We have, as Ron mentioned earlier, the November twenty-sixth community school safety committee meeting at five P M. The now newly scheduled December fourth retreat, book study, the December tenth regular board meeting. I will ask, at this point, we have, very typically, after the December regular board meeting, had a little pre-holiday gathering. Is there any interest in doing so again this year? I know the holidays get very busy for people. I see one person nodding her head. I know the holidays get very busy for everyone, and so I certainly don't want it to seem to be any kind of an obligation, but we certainly can do that again if people would like to gather a little bit informally and without a specific agenda. Okay, very good. I'll get you some information on that then. With that, we'll go to item part C of that section, and that's the finance committee.
We did have a meeting after the preliminary budget hearing that was at our board meeting, the October board meeting, met on October fourteenth, and the purpose of the meeting was simply to review at a slower pace and in more detail, the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget. So Mr. Hyatt timely reviewed material with us, and we were invited to ask questions. The board received and requested, but it continues to receive, a monthly snapshot of the budget, and you can see that that is actually included in this month's treasures report. There's a report on Fund Ten, budget versus actual, this year compared to last year for July through October. I mean, there's one each for each month. And we discussed implementing a Fund Forty-Six, which would be a way for us to put money aside to, for, is it capital improvements? And with the caveat that you have to wait five years from the first year that you actually implement that, before you can draw against any of the money. So we discussed that, but no action was taken, and this is, it was a meeting to present information. There was no action taken at the meeting, except to adjourn.
Very good, thank you. We'll move from there to the personnel committee.
The personnel committee met two times this past month. Our first meeting was on October fifteenth, and all of us were present, the entire board was present. And after a long, not long, but a vibrant discussion, the staff, a motion was made by Pat Fair, that with recommendation of the full board at this meeting, that we increase the hourly wage for our special ed aides, our regular aides, and our health aides to an increase of fifty cents per hour that will begin with our January first payroll. So the motion carried unanimously on that vote, and so we're bringing it forward tonight for, so I don't know if we want to do this, or we want to do all the motions together.
Let's take them one at a time, if we can, please. With that being a committee recommendation and motion, we don't require a second, any discussion? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Thank you.
Then the second meeting that we had was on October thirtieth, and there were several items on the agenda. We were all present for that meeting as well. And, no, I think Mark is missing, he's out of town. So the first item that we discussed on the agenda was how we onboard new activities in our district. We realized that there's not a uniform procedure, there isn't a uniform form that's filled out, there isn't a particular time that applications have to be submitted by, and that can make things a little difficult when you're planning on budget items. So we had a long discussion about it and said that we would table that for further discussion in another meeting, because there was a lot to consider there. The next thing on the agenda was the middle school robotics steam club. We were presented with information that there are two advisors on that, and they, the request was made to fund that second advisor for the middle school robotics. The next item that was requested is, there is a second moderator for the authors, authors and actors, all school play, because of the number of students involved, they need a second moderator for that, so there was a request for that. The third request was for a middle school girls soccer club. To this point, our girls and, girls and boys have all played on the same team, and there's a desire to separate them, because of numbers and conflicts with other sports. So one soccer, the boys would play in the fall, and the girls would play in the spring. So it was a request for a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade girls soccer team that would start in the spring. The fourth item was for an acapella group to start, and Mr. Connor, one of the music instructors here, would like to start extracurricular. Some of our other choirs are all curricular, so this would be extracurricular or co-curricular. An acapella group that would meet in the morning before school, could compete locally, nationally, whatever. And it would be open to all students that would be interested, but because it's an elite choir group, it would be restricted to a certain number of students. And so that was that request. After discussion, we realized that these were all good things, these are all wonderful things, actually, but because of the timeliness of it, and it was the day before we were to approve our budget for the year, we couldn't determine that we could give money to these activities, because we're, you know, we're fiscally, financially sound, and at this point, we couldn't commit to that. So what the board made a commitment to do was to allow these activities to go forward for this year with advisors and moderators, but there would be no money attached to it at this point, nor could we guarantee in the future. We have lists of co-curriculars already, and so we need to be prudent at how we proceed forward and the amount of money that we can get. Hence, the discussion of when groups apply for this, there should be a date that's a little earlier in the year that would maybe help carve with the budget and items and things like that, and we could give it more consideration than the day before a budget is due. So at this point, we're coming forward with recommendations that the middle school robotics steam club, the middle school fall authors and actors all play assistant director, the middle school girls soccer club, and the high school acapella group can go forward as sanctioned groups, but no, no money involved.
As a committee recommendation, therefore a motion, it requires no second. Any discussion?
I do have a question, a request for clarification. I know there was some discussion during the meeting about whether, if a middle school girls soccer club were approved, the girls would continue to play in the fall.
Yes.
And so what was your understanding? Did the motion just a split?
They would be given that option to play with the boys in the fall.
Okay.
But there would be a unique girls team also in the spring, that would be all girls.
Is it okay if I ask Joe to comment on what he learned as he researched that?
Absolutely. And I know Liz Canera's here tonight, and I think she's one of the coaches for the team.
I reached out to a gentleman that taught a course on Title IX that I went to a few years ago, through the Wisconsin Athletic Directors Association, and he said that his recommendation, I explained the scenario, he said his recommendation would be to have a boys only in the fall and a girls only in the spring, that that would be the most compliant way with the Title IX, you know, regulations. So, yeah, his recommendation was to do boys only, girls only.
And that makes sense.
And, and you, we had had some discussion just about safety also, and so I, I like that. That would be my preference, and if the motion could be made with that in mind, would that be the understanding?
I would prefer that the motion stand as approval of the club, as opposed to putting whatever caveat sign it. whatever copyrights on it. We leave that to...
Okay.
Those that are more directly involved to work those things out.
That's fine, yes, yes.
Other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Thank you. We'll move on to the administration.
First element we have here, our item is the elementary-level education assistant. It's a special ed assistant, and there's a letter in the packet from Lori in regards to this.
I would move approval of adding a special ed assistant to the recommendation of...
This is a half-time decision.
That's a point five FTE.
Correct.
It's a point five addition. It'll be a one-point-o layer, but it's a point five addition in our staffing model.
All right, motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Thank you. Second item?
This is a special ed service provider contract, and we have a medically fragile childhood student. What we'd like to do, Lori's been working on this, is the contract with the parent is much less expensive for us to do that than to hire an LPN, so, or an RN. So, we're recommending that you approve this contract for the nineteen-twenty school year, as a service provider for the parent.
And the, I do need to apologize, there's an error in my cover letter. It says thirteen an hour. The contract stands at twelve fifty-five an hour. That's a match to our educational, special education, educational assistance day. So, that would be the approved rate.
And we've done that before.
Yes.
So, I would move approval of entering into a service agreement with a service provider to provide child-specific nursing and care services three, four days a week, for two-point five hours a day, for nineteen-twenty, at the rate of twelve dollars and twenty-five cents. None?
I'll second.
Motion in second, any discussion? If you have one question, under an agreement like that, insurance for the individual, liability?
That is managed under the agreement, per talking to Carol and Carl, that the district be held harmless from any liability.
All right, very good. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Okay, revised budget for two thousand nineteen-twenty?
This is to amend the nineteen-twenty budget that you approved on October thirtieth. We had a little typo in there, and so we just want to correct that for the record.
I would move approval...
Second.
...to amend the budget.
Okay, motion in second, and that's to adopt the revenue budget at thirty-two million four hundred thousand four thirty-five, and the expenditure at thirty-two two eighty-two eight eighty-one.
Yes.
Any motion in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? That moves us on to the charter school information.
Yeah, our charter school is requesting approval of an extracurricular robotics club for grades two through six, with a volunteer advisor, Josh Pollin. Again, this is just like the previous ones, with no district funding.
And, and just to clarify, the government's council has already approved these positions, as is their right, and this would simply open the door for the same opportunities that we offer to our other schools, to provide funding for stipends for their advisors. That's my understanding of why we're here, talking about this.
I, I think the reason, Sandy, we put it on the agenda was just so consistency, if down the road, that they come and they do want funding...
Right.
And the district is going to fund it...
Yes.
That it is formally recognized right now.
Yes. That's, that's...
Is that what you meant?
That's what I was, yes. That's what I was trying to convey.
Okay.
Not to, not to interfere with what they have the authority to do, but to be consistent in what we're doing.
So, this is informational, then?
Well, we'd like you to officially act to approve it, or not allow.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Thank you. One more?
Yep, the, the final one is, again, this is our charter school, extracurricular musical production for grades second through sixth. The directors would be Isaac and Madeline Chinsky.
I would move approval.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is notice of the spring election.
Yeah, this is a standing one every month, we do this. And the notice is for Tuesday, the first Tuesday of April, so we're looking at April seventh of two thousand twenty, and our president, Steve, and Pat are, are up for election this year.
That's assuming they're running.
That was a lot.
Okay, so that was more informational. Item G, appointment of deputy clerk for elections. You're really getting ahead on this whole election thing.
Well, my understanding is Carol has always been our deputy clerk, and...
That's correct.
And I, I think we're just going to continue with that at this point, so what we're looking at is for the board to continue to have Carol be assigned as the deputy.
That being an appointed position, consider her so appointed.
Okay.
Okay, brings us to the consent agenda. But before we get to that, Abby, I can give you the opportunity to bring anything forward, if you have anything, not meaning to put you on the spot, but I will.
Oh, I just want to say that actually, that a cappella group that was mentioned, I'm, we, it's fourteen members, and we already held auditions, and I'm actually part of that. So, yeah, that was recording, I was talking about that. And then, what should we be talking about for the mystery class? That's for the theater appreciation, and I'm also in that class.
Yay!
So, I'm going to, it's The Curious Incident of the Dog in the Night. It's like a mystery kind of, at Ashash, so.
Very good. With that, we will move to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move, we accept the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in second, any discussion?
Yeah, I, I just want to say thank you to Carl and Carol Business Office for these new operations reports for Fund X. It's really nice to have them.
With that, roll call.
Do you have that?
Here. Aye.
Martha Pulvisky?
Aye.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Betty Minion?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Anybody that doesn't approve? Thank you very much, everyone.
Good job.